The road department is going to be the bucket truck repair request.
We have a two thousand and four bucket truck. It needs a motor. And we had two quotes on Rain Power and Rainy's Truck. Um, the Rain Power quote eighteen thousand five hundred fifty-two dollars and seventy-nine cent. It comes with a two-year warranty. Truck one twenty-one thousand eight twenty-seven dollars and ninety-five cents, no warranty. I'll let you see the quotes attached, as you can see the, of course, the Rain Power off the lot. Listen, Charlie.
What was my turn or I had to say three to one?
Two to three weeks.
Two to three weeks.
I noticed on the Rain Power one too, you have an option for a third or four-year warranty if you so choose.
If we wanted to increase it, we could. You're giving us money, but we could increase it.
Charlie, that four-year warranty, they're pretty good about staying up with it.
Sir?
The four-year warranty, if we go with the four-year warranty or less than.
I have, we haven't had to deal with any warranties to Rain Power as far as, you know, something we've had done afterwards. So I couldn't do it.
It doesn't show how much that would be though, does it?
No, it didn't. It didn't, that's not.
Did they tell you how much more it would be from this out for the four-year warranty?
Not verbally, but I know it would be more money. I can find out, but.
Well, I'll tell you what you need. You need to make a motion to approve either one of the prices. Own there and then if they can come back later and I'll tell you what the additional two years on the warranty would be.
Well, can we make a motion to pass the Rain Power with the.
Option of the four-year, is it reasonable?
Yeah, if the freedom.
Reasonable.
Can we do it?
Reasonable, being reasonable is.
Now, what I would do is this, I'd make a motion that we accept. Quote from Rain Power for eighteen thousand five hundred fifty-two dollars and seventy-nine cent with the two years warranty on it. And if it, and y'all find out what the additional two years would be on that and what the price would be different, just let us know at our next board meeting and we'll decide whether we own an additional two years or not. Yes, sir.
I'll take it out of my way.
We got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
All in favor, please sit if I'm not saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Alright, now we're going to move on to the, we want to move on to the equipment workshop or do you want to take care of the rest of business and come back and do the equipment workshop? Well, again, pay the bills and commission reports, that kind of stuff.
I said because my head.
We will now open the equipment workshop.
Hi.
Go ahead and get started, ma'am.
I have included, um, quotes for new equipment. We had everything from dump truck graders, a kids' grader, a semi-truck, a trailer, and a John Deere grader. Um, these prices are quoted prices only. Um, anything that we don't purchase in this budget year, the prices will go up because it will be on next year's budget price. Um, the prices are, you know, could change with options, but you know, shoot, it could go up or down, are options that we select. Uh, we just wanted to give you a general idea of what's out there, of what we need because we're dealing with equipment that is old. And as you see on the second sheet, we listed our dump trucks and our graders. And just to give you an idea of what we're dealing with, the repair costs, the age of the equipment that we're dealing with. We're just trying to give you guys an idea of what we need to operate at the repair department.
Repair costs, are those estimated repair costs going forward? That's what we've invested in so far?
So far, from the date, the dump truck dates are which run from January first, two thousand and ten to May fourth, um, sixteen. The graders are from January first, nineteen eighty-nine to, um, April twenty-sixth, twenty sixteen.
So necessarily on this grader number thirty-two, we put sixty-three thousand two hundred forty-seven dollars and sixty-seven cent.
Right.
Right, if you'll notice, our cat, our cat graders, we spend a lot less money on than our John Deere graders.
The, the newest graders that we have is the John Deere's, which is sixteen years old. And one of them, we spent a hundred and eleven thousand on.
I always felt we put a transmission in last year.
Number eighty.
Eighty.
The ninety-five.
That was a John Deere.
That was a John Deere.
Yep.
Yes, look at that, um, two grader y'all got down there, got fifteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four hours.
Yeah, now I'm, now I'm gonna tell you, the hour meter is only, that's as far back as we could track it on computer. But they had meter changes and then grader hours is not current. Like the seventy-seven grader being one of the hours graders, that grader probably got thirty thousand on it, which it shows on your paper almost twenty thousand.
Yes, because some of these, some of these we didn't keep up with our computer. We've had them longer than we've had computers.
Right.
I know, I'll tell you something right there. I really should.
But we, we, I mean, we just can't keep going and going and putting it off and, I mean, eventually we got to have some money in that equipment line item to replace. And like I say, none of this is locked down because we have trade-in values on dump trucks, grader, or anything that we're going to get, we have a trade-in value as well, but we just wanted to put some numbers up there.
Well, I don't know, Ben and Paul, I know what you're talking about. If you mess around, let me share it one time and talk about all, you're in a mess.
And that's what we're going to do.
And we need to start facing this stuff out and buying something every year.
Exactly right.
Oh.
Now, also, not cutting you off, Mike, but work on the figures that I figured. That if we did the five-year faithful, how much was, how much difference would that case? Yeah, I mean, if we was the, well, if we was the faithful eight grader over five years with the interest and stuff, I'd be serving up a point of one thousand dollars than if you do that kind of seven. You know, I would, I would personally like to have some money if we could in a budget to buy it straight out. And we don't own it for twenty-five or thirty years again. Instead of trying to do several and paying for them, you know what I mean, and pay it.
Let me ask you this.
Miss Kent, I'll get you in a minute.
I'm sorry, do you even care? Well, I'd like to see you do it myself, because I know what position. Just reading this and talking to y'all, give them Mr. Brady, and we'll, and pick out, see how much money we're going to have in the budget, set up the equipment. And let's go ahead and start replacing two or three pieces at a time like you did here, two or three pieces back here. And go ahead and get, and get it up to where, where y'all think we need to be. I mean, you got Charlie out there who's best there isn't working on anything.
Right. Well, I talked before even, and, and he brought some of this to my attention, but I'm at their four graders for sure. I mean, they don't have to be all this year. If we can't find enough money, but that's the four grader we need to start working on.
The sad news is we ain't gonna be able to find enough money, guys. This, this is the, this is, there, there's two ways to think about this and, and I've been working with Miss Anne trying to get, uh, a contract that's acceptable to the organization that sells the equipment and acceptable to her standards to protect the county from any liability.
Right.
In my mind, the only way that we're going to be able to meet the needs of multiple pieces of equipment is to go through some sort of a lease program or a purchase on time program. If not, we, you know, we have enough money this year, we buy one dump truck, one motor grader, just for instance. Then that's a year we go without nothing. Well, in the meantime, we're still having these costs that are eating us up of maintenance and repair. Whereas if we go on a, uh, some sort of a lease purchase program or whatever the proper legal term is, we can get multiple pieces of equipment for the same amount of money, say that number's, just pull up a number out of there, two hundred thousand dollars. We make four fifty thousand dollar payments a year.
But what we alone with then, right?
But we would own it in the end, yeah, I mean, this is a purchase problem. I'm not, I'm not wanting to lease it now. Because whenever you do that lease thing, whenever you turn it back in, they go, oh, why you putting me miles on, putting me hours on, you're a waste of time of money. No, we're, we're, we're talking about purchasing, but we're talking about purchasing on time, you know, correct?
Yes, and, and what we've, what we've worked out is still not something that I can sign off on, but.
You're gonna have to sign off on it.
But it's not something that I'll say you absolutely can't do it.
Yes.
What we're faced with now is setting up these agreements that have successive year-long terms. There's no case law that says that less than a year, start over. The constitution forbids you from pledging your full faith and credit, basically borrowing money without a referendum, the citizens. So if you buy these things on time, you can't get the liens on, individually you buy a car. The board doesn't have, they're gonna lean on your car. The board doesn't have that option. If you're committing to your full faith and credit, you haven't done the referendum. There is a twelve-month period in the constitution says you, in order to get the kind, this kind of equipment, you do these bonds that will mature in twelve months. So if you do these less than twelve-month successive terms, the argument is that you can do it that way. Again, I can't say, I can sign off on that. But that's what I'm working on right now, getting all the other provisions in place that you're taking the risk that that might be challenged and found unconstitutional. There's no case out there that says that's unconstitutional.
The argument also.
A lot of counties are doing that, is my opinion.
Yes, the ar- argument also is, well, I think it's more than that, but other counties are doing it and, and especially counties that are in our situation. But, you know, we, let's keep in mind, you know, this is, you know, this is something that needs to be addressed more sooner than later. But I would, I would only recommend that whatever our plan of action is, that we follow, uh, follow other capital improvement protocols that other departments have done, like the sheriff's office. Let's not go buy four dump trucks this year and for them all to wear out at the same time, let's do two and then maybe wait, if we can wait two years, that'd be great, if we can only afford to wait one year. You know, something along those lines, um, to stagger it out so they don't all wear out at the same time. In addition to, you can, you know, better fleet management, you can utilize, you know, the, the stuff with more miles on the shorter trips, the stuff with less miles on longer trips, you know, manage it that way so that, you know, you kind of keep everything within, uh, a certain standard. But I, I, trust me, I, I've, I've been knowing this has been coming and we've been trying, but I've been trying to figure out an answer. I wish that there was some folks here from finance that can answer some other questions that, that I have about some other revenue sources to help prop this up, but, um, there's definitely, definitely a need for replacing some, some dump trucks, replacing some graders. And then there's some other equipment I, I see on this list.
Now, when we come back to the dump trucks, John, right now, we're going to just try to get one.
Okay.
We've moved people around, tried to turn them around to where one truck is all we're going to need right now.
Okay, well, that's.
So the agreement that I'm working on is just for one, yeah?
Only for one.
And I think we're just going to try to buy one outright. So we're not even going to do the agreement that I'm working on.
Well, we might not, we might have to change that for the graders, if our money's, whichever we can access it.
And, and here's the problem, Miss Anne, we're getting so close to the end of our budget year. If we don't make a move now and go ahead and like purchase one outright, if we wait and try to get those agreements and everything in place, our time may be run out. As Jesse and Kelly can tell you, finding these trucks is hard. You know, uh, one option that we looked at, they no longer make that model anymore. And so, you know, that's the reason, is not that we want you to stop working on that process because while it might not be for this purchase, there's other things that you need.
Okay.
Can we skip the, this budget year and on the dump truck and start over next year with the dump trucks then?
Well, when you mentioned, when you mentioned what we're proposing, my need to do is to do a, a more in-depth workshop on this with the finance people here and see what other options are out there for the long-range thing or for the, the large purchases. I just saw in the paper the other day, I guess it was the city of Williston, without forbid, the banks to buy a fire truck. There's other options out there. But the need, need now, if they can buy one or two and have them on the ground by September thirtieth, that's one thing. But long-range and setting up a, a fleet management plan like Chief Knowles did with ambulances and got us back up to speed. That's what we need to do. Long-range to fill all of his needs, but the immediate thing is, is these are the most critical that's, that we're just throwing money away.
And it's a lot.
And, and what we really want to do is use this just to, for informational purposes, so that y'all could see the needs that Mr. Brady was talking about that are coming up. And so that the road department wasn't trying to run to each one of y'all individually and to take care of that. That way everybody got the same information and, you know, we're all looking at this together.
Right, I, I, well, we all standing there, I, and I have not, no idea, I know the state contract, we do fire truck. Does the state, they have a contract, we get state bids on like the dump.
Sheriff bid.
They all take bids.
Always on. That's why I said that these will change in October and they'll all probably increase in October.
I know you could see the difference too, but, and, and I'm standing here before y'all and I, I'm personally, I know, I mean, I'm looking at this Danny has here, I know the John Deere is like two oh two, some, a base grader, kind of caterpillar two eleven. I mean, I know that's nine thousand dollars. And I'm, and I'm going to come before y'all and that's what I'm going to push for because when you backtrack and look at the maintenance records on the John Deere, you can see the caterpillars held up a lot better.
Correct.
So that was one thing I wanted to put in the equation too.
Mr. Little, do you have, do you have something?
Yeah.
Okay.
The physical, um, county.
Constraining.
Yeah. It's not all going into the road department.
There's, there's two, there's two pools of physical constraining money. One of them is going into the road department. But years ago, when we faced this same dilemma, I think, uh, some of the second pool of that physical constraining went to the road department also.
But now it's just that one, the one, this, this would constrain money goes to the road. Well, I'd like to look at that because I think it needs to be going into the road department. If it was going into the road department, we, we wouldn't find ourselves in this, in this situation. And we could be out there doing more new consults, construction.
I think we're much better shape than what we was some years ago, because some years ago, before the board, uh, went with the higher assessments to fund firing EMS. Now we're not having to subsidize firing EMS out of your general fund, I mean, that assessment program is carrying. So now you should be able to have some, uh, money there going forward. But I think we need to, we about to start budget workshops anyhow, but, uh, you're right, we need to look at the different pots of revenue coming in. But we know our main concern is going to be the road department because the gas tax money is just not able to carry it. The gas tax money is not what it used to be. You know, gas is higher and all of that, but people are traveling less, people are traveling more, more efficient and all of that, so people aren't.
And the gas tax money is based on per gallon, not, you know, it can go to ten dollars a gallon. And the county portion is still going to be the, the exact same in the gallon.
Yeah, that, that, that ain't going to go up just because it drives gas on it.
So you gotta subsidize it, whether you take it out of physically constrained monies or, or debt service or whatever, that's what's going to happen.
That, that's where I want to look, is, is into our debt service. And, and Jared and Sheila are supposed to be getting the answer on that. But one thing I want everybody to keep in mind, this isn't a leading county problem, I mean, it is, but it's not just us. I mean, the state road system is crumbling and they don't have the revenue to, to repair it and maintain it. The federal road system is in the same shape.
I've seen that through my grant programs, the money decreasing.
I mean, the, the federal, I mean, which is a much larger scale, the federal government is like three hundred billion dollars upside down with gas tax and, and the way they generate money, so something has to be done to, to prop this up beyond. I mean, we're not going to be able to raise the gas tax enough if we even wanted to, to cover the cost moving forward of equipment, supplies, labor, the costs associated with labor. I mean, it's, it's a different world than what it was twenty years ago.
Now, the only fun that is doing good on, on those kinds of fuel taxes is aviation fuel tax. So that, that's a user fee and that's what's going to be improvements of the air force, but that's aviation fuel. That has nothing to do with what we're doing here on this one.
Miss Kent.
Mr. Chef, what does a new grader cost?
Two hundred and eleven thousand sixty-three dollars if we got the cat and if we went with the John Deere, it'd be two hundred and two thousand eight hundred ninety-six dollars.
And how many hours? But now that varies on the options, that, I mean, that's.
That's just the base price.
It could go up or down.
I understand, huh? For how many hours could we reasonably expect that the equipment to last? Before two, before hundred twelve thousand dollar repair costs come to that?
Well, looking at one example here, there's a two thousand grader that's sixteen years old, it's cost us a hundred and eleven thousand dollars.
That's what I'm saying.
So it basically half the money of a new one.
But now, but now that was on the John Deere side.
What?
So if you look at a caterpillar that was over thirty years old, you don't have, how much is it?
Seventy-two thousand.
Seventy-two thousand.
Bought in nineteen eighty-two.
So we wouldn't want to buy a John Deere if they can't do any of that.
I wish, right.
It's one of those situations like, uh, when we were in the office this morning discussing this and Kelly brought up a great point. I mean, we need something to work with, not work on.
Right.
But by far, I don't care if it's John Deere, I don't care if it's caterpillar, y'all got tier four emissions that you have to meet now, that's through the government and you can have trouble with that kind of stuff, I don't care what brand. But now the, the loader that we purchased, I can tell you, John Deere has been to that tip. A minimum of twelve thousand.
Two emissions.
You know, that, injectors, just little stuff like that.
They've also had it in their possession for over a month, one time.
And, and what does a new dump truck cost?
Hundred and fifty thousand nine hundred sixty-seven dollars twenty-seven cent.
And, and what lifespan does that have?
Well, we got some right now, it's got seven hundred thousand miles on it.
They're two thousand and one.
They're two thousand and one.
How, how much are we using this two thousand and one? Are they, are we using it daily or are they kind of reserved?
We have one is down.
And one more question, please, on Miss Nancy. If, just, just to discount, if we were to have a referendum, would that cost us money from the general fund or does that come out of the budget of the election funds? And does that go through the election funds?
Well, to actually conduct the referendum comes out of the elections budget, but this board funds it now. If the board would want to look at, uh, borrowing money, bonding money, there are other options besides, uh, having had a referendum. If they can find another source of money to commit to paying back that bond, then they don't have to do a referendum. They just can't use general fund to commit, or they need a referendum. If you could commit the gas tax and do bond for the long-term purchase, you wouldn't need the referendum, like you don't have the gas to commit from what I think. You need that for your operating.
And now please, Kate, these are our large pieces of equipment, but we still have mowers on the road that break down that we'll need to replace and all that, yeah, pickup trucks.
If it don't rain, I think we're going to start putting up fences on that road. We ain't, it'd be cheap.
Save your money, just pick them out, don't worry about building fence.
It's like old time, or do your tire tie around the neck, gun dragon down the road. Can I make a comment or a motion? Go ahead, Brian.
I'll just have one more thing. Uh, as far as you need one dump truck. You need one dump truck that you're, you're talking about right now, is there any other piece of equipment that you need or you could use right now, so we know what we're.
I love what you're trying to.
Let me, let me reiterate what he said, what he said. Anything that you must have.
Well, well, I, I mean, I'll go ahead and put this out in plain English, I mean, our trailer is forty inches high. I don't care what we call or haul with D O T standards, we're over height. Every time we load our tractor up, we're three inches over height. And all that's fine and well until the day comes.
Right.
Now we haul that big loader to Ocala. Over the height, it's thirteen six, that loader's fourteen nine on that trailer.
Put a little Jimmy driver in.
We can't, we, we can't, we can't load our paper up. If we, if we get ready to paper our next rail, it's going to cost us three hundred dollars to get it there and it's going to cost three hundred dollars to get it back. There's six hundred left.
Depends on where you're papering at. You're papering in my district, we're going to drop it off and we can just leave it there.
Yes, in a motion or however y'all want to make it, it don't matter.
Now, now Danny, now Danny did talk to me about getting with John, but now he goes through the whole deal with Danny on the truck.
John McDonal.
John McDonald, generally the police. For one, what we, what I would like or what we need, let me rephrase that. Would is called paper special. In other words, in trailers that are about like this, as they get more to the front, they get in there. Even when they come get our paper, we still have to drag out the twelve and twelves and the six to twelve and the long oak board to load that thing on it. And a trailer is sixty-five thousand dollars with rear ramps. And when I say rear ramps, I mean, a lot of times, even in a storm situation, you don't want to have to stop and unhook that trailer, pull your truck out, unload your equipment, I want.
You want the rear ramps.
Rear ramps on it, where if we're, we're running around in the county, we just let the ramp down, load the loader, the backhoe, whatever on the trailer. And we don't have to detach it and plus we have to get off in dishes and places and.
Forestry, unfortunate forestry now.
So, that is the two needs. But, but we are going to check out of that, but that is the two needs that we need to have the worst down right now. I would like to get a dump truck for seven hundred thousand miles off the road and I would like to have a trailer that we can move our stuff when we want to and how we want to legally.
Right.
How much money?
Most of that trailer's lot, it's lot safer load and unload the equipment on too, especially with the tracking machines, you know, something like that, it's lot safer.
How much money is currently in our equipment line item?
We are hoping with some budget amendments. We're hoping to get up to two hundred is our goal, with some budget amendments.
I think we looked at a hundred and sixty-five that we could put a frame on, but if a couple of things, we don't have to spend money on borrowing some from the shop side, if any left.
And, and that might be some time to do, you know, we might have to get Charlie as well and say, hey, you know, we can't fix this off, we got to have some money.
Probably need to pay Paul.
We are, we are.
True, and, and we actually talked about putting off some repairs just to see if we could.
Put some stuff online so we can get it until October.
That's two years. This, uh, this eager beaver trailer. Sixty-two, four sixty, four sixty-eight. That, that's the trailer you're talking about that you need. So you're telling me that you got, that you can put your hand on a hundred sixty-five thousand dollars right now today? Okay, and this trailer is on the safety of contract, correct?
Yes.
I make a motion if we approve to purchase the two thousand and sixteen Eagle trailer for sixty-three thousand four hundred and sixty-eight dollars.
I'll say. You can have that and I'm going to have it.
And this is my, my interpretation on my statement anyway.
From what Dan said.
From what he said. But people don't realize is, if you load a piece of equipment up and it's too high and that man that works for me goes down the road with it and he gets pulled over, he's the one that's responsible. and that man that works for me goes down the road with it and he gets pulled over, he's the one that's responsible for that. Not you, not you, not you, but him. And that's the situation that we're putting that driver in.
I am, Mr. Chairman, I'm appalled to hear not suffice so, that we hold the driver responsible instead of the county when he writes around illegal equipment. But I would like to know what the cost.
It's not our rules.
I understand, but I would like to know what the price of the ticket would be.
I, I couldn't tell you.
It varies on who writes them up, on the charge. It would be what the charge is. It would be, you know.
It could be multiple violations whether with the, yeah.
It would vary on.
We have questions being called for.
One of the inquiry to Miss Anne, if this is a workshop, are they making sure they're allowed to?
They're, they're allowed. I don't know where that notion comes from that you can't go to the workshop.
Yeah, I want to check among members of your motion, I have that.
Question's been called for. I'm trying to think how to handle this. There's something else I want to say.
Yeah, but I got something else I want to ask.
But, so I'm gonna just break Robert's rules of order right here. Do you need the dump, if we, if we commit our money? If we commit our money to purchase this lowboy trailer, is that more of a need than the dump truck? Because we're gonna spend the money that we could spend on the dump truck? I mean, what, where are we really more desperate against?
That, that comes to the second line. I mean, the word are gonna wind up with about two hundred thousand dollars in there. We got two trucks to trade in, the dump truck's one fifty. We trade two in, we get the dump truck at one twenty. And sixty on this, that's gonna put us about one eighty and if we have two hundred in there, that'd be the next thing, can we make a motion to buy the dump truck as well?
I'm cutting out your second round, that's what I was thinking, sir.
Had, had one on with most and voted on, I think comeback would be, let's see how much money we have left in three weeks to come back. And if we got money later, we'll get the dump truck in three weeks.
By charge, if you don't run it first, then we'll come back for dump truck. Got your move.
Yes, motion on the floor, and I'm not amended, I know she's gonna amend it, but it's not a negative. One last thing I guess I'll add is if we get this new trailer, at least we haul our broke down dump trucks on it. And be late.
We're a law practice, Charles. It will keep it running.
I'm late, I'm not the drive on it. I, I wouldn't have a silent day.
All in favor of the motion by Commissioner Stevens that was seconded by Commissioner Meeks and Commissioner Warner? Please see if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
All those.
Now, what do you mean that?
Yeah, well, let's break out a checkbook and start writing checks.
I just wanna know, that's what I'm gonna say now.
Look and see what you have left in three weeks.
And then come up with the next priority?
Come up with the next priority.
Because.
Of what taking operating.
Because it, it, it's, it's in fairly good shape, but I'm gonna back this up. Our lowboy somewhat several years ago had died, but it was good enough for Benny to use, so we swapped trucks more or less. And we have one of their old garbage trucks that that is what we're pulling our lowboy with. It did have seven hundred and fifty thousand miles on it as well. So that's gonna come down to the next, that's something, big deal, John.
So you bought a trailer, don't have a truck.
We literally put the trailer in front of the truck.
It's still feasible, we checked options on.
But I didn't want you to know that because it is on this list somewhere.
Here.
I don't see it on this list yet.
The trailer, class A.
Class A semi.
We did a check to make sure that what we had is kind of just. So we prioritize.
Well, here, let, let's think of this, okay, 'cause I, I. Well, I'm just, I'm understanding that, that we need stuff, but worst case scenario, you know, we have a disaster and we have to, have to, uh, hold operations and our truck breaks down. We can go borrow a truck from the landfill to get us out of a pinch. Even if it's not a disaster and we're having to, to, to activate.
Well, me and Kelly.
We can borrow a truck. So the dump truck we use on a daily basis. The, the lowboy we use.
A cable.
So.
To a three thousand weight.
Keep that in mind. Well, I'm just saying, I mean.
Illegal. Illegal.
That's what the man's gonna say. You don't write me tickets, we bought a new one.
But the truck we do have, the landfill does have a kit on it that allows us for the disaster. So there won't be any hat on or anything like that.
Right. So we have a drop tail and a detachable?
No, no, no. This, the trucks is legal and has all the stuff on it to pull. Because with the garbage trucks with live bottoms, they had to have that kit on it, being in a garbage truck.
All right, well, we all have our homework to do.
Yeah, I'm gonna stop now, y'all.
I don't know why I'm worried about it. I mean, we have to have it, it's the cost of doing business.
It is.
If people want the service provided, we gotta have it.
You gotta, that's it.
If you had it like this, you're gonna be saving six hundred dollars, six hundred dollars each time you move that.
And we're fixing to do twelve hundreds probably on it in the next month and a half, six weeks. So.
Don't think you feel better, y'all.
But we might be moving it to the wrong district.
I'll tell you where you need to move to.
That's not exactly how frustrated you are right now, is it?
Cause he's either twenty-four million, I think it is, or it's, or it's, uh, not. You have anything else for us anymore?
No, I'm just gonna stop. Yeah, good news, Butler Road. Butler Road is nice, beautiful. We, we should be done tomorrow with Butler Road and I guess the next, without costing a bunch of money right now, C forty-eight. There was four, five, six pipes on it to put in and some dicks cleaned out. That's probably where we'll be in the next week. Everything's going beautiful. I don't have any pictures, I sent some to Rock. I don't know, I didn't send none to Danny.
I went to.
But, yeah, but you didn't see the penny, bro. Uh, we are putting guard rail up on it.
Of that order free.
About three years ago, there was a road out of Stickle Chase that was number one on the list following the University Oaks.
Yeah, that was my, that was the next thing. We are slightly on hold.
We were number one on the list three years ago.
That wasn't this fourth? That was not me. October one.
We are slightly on hold with all the creek because my people has got a paper road and him working and I just can't get in right now, so.
You can get in paper road?
Yeah, I can. But my dump trucks, I, I can't buy any, so I can't haul them out. I can't get down, I can't haul it down, the paper down our lowboy trailer because it's too tall.
Well, be sure you take thirteen ten sixty-nine because the road has got too many.
But anyhow, no, I'm done. All is going well. I mean, we're really super busy. We're making some great swings and aimers and it's looking good.
How often do you do every time on the trailer?
That, that will be a question that I'm gonna ask because it always seems like when we get something, we get the last one. I don't see one in our year.
I'll tell him we don't need him, now and then now.
Yeah, I might tell him if he can't get the next time, we'll find another mentor.
Um, once we get the covers on C forty A, that would give Windmills a doorhead to start surveying for our grant project. He's currently putting that cover at the hole until we get covered work and additional damage to the bridge or stop. Which will widen the surface that way. They're, they're not gonna.
I saw you get a bunch of Scott projects out there. I'm thinking, can't you tell my show, ma'am, I'm talking about.
No, they, they weren't gonna do any work till we got done because I didn't want them to, I didn't want us to interfere with each other.
C forty-eight.
We want to get on the dump work before they start.
Yeah, that's not covering the grant, that's why.
Well, you don't wanna fix the road and have everybody teed it up.
Exactly, and then we cut them on the brand direct.
All right, that's good.
Yes, ma'am.
How much are you wiring it?
What is it now?
Twenty.
Twenty.
Twenty. Then that's what me and Allison, Wilbur and Kelly and Casey, if we have enough right away for these grants from now on, instead of doing these drugs twenty, let's do twenty-two. I mean, look at, look at, write a three forty-three any day of the week where we widen it and add it to the pavement. Just look at how good the shelter and stuff is on that.
We don't have the drop hogs as bad either.
Same, exactly, it's the hazard button, it's the hazard.
It's always, we all the time fixing any of those roads, every day.
I mean, even if it costs us a little bit to do that.
We figured on the eighth, it took us three additional dump trucks to pass forward.
I need to check, I just sent in the request to have it done, so I need to check.
Probably Kelly, they, and Casey, they went out there from the Blue Bear Farm where all the trucks were coming in and out, but I dropped off one. They did a really good yelp on that.
Now, like I say, if that was, well, a twenty-two foot road, like when we done eighth, I mean, we actually squeezed twenty-one out of it. We made it a foot wider than normal and it was three dump truck loads of asphalt was in total. Top of five hundred dollars more. But now they have to drop off and shoot you something.
We breaking off the edge.
Well, I, I guess my next, we discussed workshops and finance.
Yes, Freddie.
Is that something?
Workshops and finance?
Yes.
What do you want to do?
Start figuring it out.
Workshops and finance, you wanna start us planning a date to do a workshop with finance?
You might do it, uh, the next meeting, we've got three weeks in between, the board, the board hopefully after the next meeting will get the interview, the, uh, ag extension director. So, but that won't take long, so maybe we can do a workshop then because if you need to.
I have to submit my budget on Friday.
Budgets can be amended, sir. Budgets can always be amended.
I'm gonna make it a good one.
I can only imagine. Hey, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
Public comment. Anybody ever go down to Sally Ann?
Please plan on giving us an update on the meeting that you had the day after your commission meeting on the ISO B five bypassed down in Hernando County, which was, by the way, televised.
What commission reports are good one. Yes, ma'am, I'll do that. And I'll sign autographs afterwards too.
I only saw you speak once and that was to say congratulations to the committee.
You should watch more. Cause I commented on Mr., on Mr. Adams' request to go against his own county's.
I didn't get it until three o'clock because I did not, it was being televised and if he spoke before three, then he's.
Spoke early on and I'll, I'll discuss Mr. Adams and his, uh, his, uh, his, uh, resolution. All right, any other public comments? All the public left. Mayor Weiss?
Yes.
Evening? Mayor Merritt?
Uh, South Levy Marketplace on the twenty-eighth and Memorial Day Parade on the thirtieth.
At what time? Eleven?
Eleven is the parade and followed by the dedication of a, a plaque at the park for the gentleman that was killed. He was a veteran, so we put a plaque.
What day?
Thirtieth. Memorial Day.
What time they want to shorten it? One o'clock, one o'clock.
Uh, break starts at eleven, so I would imagine they can start lining up between nine-thirty and ten.
Line up at ten.
And that'll be in Drummond Bank, not at the school.
Shorten the route.
Yes, shorten the route.
You'll let us know if we have long individual clothes, you'll let us know.
I think that's it, all right. Sheriff's gone already. Commission report, report, commission join me.
Saturday, twenty-eighth, two o'clock and Senator Key, Memorial Day service that, so. And I do apologize, I do not remember the name of the park, Hall Park. And that's at two o'clock. And then I'll let the chairman do it though. And. He told me, want me to everyone to talk to the service department too. The Grant rodeo is next Friday and Saturday night. And I think they're a little bit different this year. All proceeds going to the FFA.
May, you have a nice open.
Yeah, 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 home.
Time this part seven?
Yes. Friday and Saturday night.
I went to the hurricane conference. Made some real big contact down there. Want to clear the place with that. And I'm ready.
I got one good idea from down there, I'm betting. A really good idea. That's the hurricane comment.
Where are you moving to?
I got some, I got some really good suggestions, one is a good comment.
That's a good time to grow.
Yep.
I'll take, uh, the rain with the hurricanes and one of the main instructions, definitely the rain. Anything else? Commissioner Stevens?
Uh, during my time in U N B S and, uh, for the.
Commissioner Meeks?
Um, can Kerry, well, I said, uh, contact, we made there, the hurricane conference was, uh, really good. And, um, see triple A baseball's over this year, so I was going to wait to watch a baseball game in the next year. Unless you wanna come watch our All-Star tournament, it will be June the fourth in Lake City. The rest of my time. The rest of my time. Go ahead.
What time, what time are you?
Two o'clock.
Two?
Two o'clock.
Sunday, right?
Yes. Um, Saturday, May twenty-eighth, Mike's already covered this briefly, Cedar Key Memorial Cemetery, one P M. Will be the, uh, Memorial Day Service in Cedar Key, there'll be one at, on May twenty-ninth, at Orange Hill Memorial Cemetery at two P M. Uh, hosted by the American Legion Post two thirty-six and DFW Post five fifty-five eleven. May thirtieth, Monday, one o'clock P M, Rosemary Hills Cemetery in Bronson, hosted by the Ann Bens Post eighty-eight. In addition to that, of course, we've already talked about the parade, that'll be an endless on Monday at eleven A M. Hurricane Conference, Mike Wise, uh, you know, s- uh, good trip. Learned about how to communicate with the, uh, media, if you're not the public information officer, it can come in very handy in the event of a hurricane, so that you don't put out bad information, or make a fool of yourself. Uh, then also took a class on federal procurement, and how the procurement process has changed. Uh, so we need to look at, I think we only have one standing contract though. For cleanup and grubs, right?
Yes, sir, we're, actually, I'm working with Mr. McDonald on a new, uh, new RFP for that. Also, just yesterday, sent an ordinance to Mr. Moody and others to review, where you all need to adopt some procurement.
Procurement, I guess, I, what it boils down to, they basically told us is that, you know, the, the federal government can, they, they wrote, they've written all these new rules, in hopes that people will misstep, and then they don't have to pay. That's kinda where they're at, rather.
And then you've got lots of federal money, it's not just the, it's not just game money.
Yes.
You've got the transportation money, uh, the.
All federal funding.
All your federal funding is governed by.
But where, yes, true, but where it really comes into play is whenever you're in a disaster, and you make a hasty decision to do what you think you're, I mean, that's just their part of it. You make a decision to do what you think's right, to get things back to normal, and then they say, oh, well, you didn't, you didn't ask for five, uh, quotes, and you didn't explicitly ask for, uh, a minority business owner, or, you know, all these new rules that you have to jump through, um, cost, uh, cost plus, contracts are written that way. So, in other, other counties, they have a lot more standing contracts, I think, than what we have, so they definitely have their work cut out for them.
Can I say one more thing?
Yes, sir.
About that, kinda what you said about the misstep, um, one thing that they're now pushing more and more is the fund the private partnerships, to where, you know, you can use more of what you have right here, before they have to, you know, rather than it come from somewhere else.
They're bringing in.
That's something that they're really, really encouraging the more.
We had an I seventy-five task force meeting on May seventh, eight, um, very interesting beginning to the meeting, the Citrus County had passed a resolution that we actually discussed here at our meeting the day before. Uh, Scott Adams, who was opposed to the resolution, presented it on behalf of his board, and then systematically said that the resolution was wrong, and he had a better idea. So I, I don't know where Mr. Adams, or Mr. Adams is, if he is any longer going to be the representative on the task force committee or not. But it's normally whenever a board, such as the one I serve on here, passes a resolution, whether I agree with it or not, I'm asked to present it, I present it. I don't present it and say it's wrong and ask for alternatives. That led to some very lively discussion about where Mr. Adams' voters were at. The, uh, beyond that, we talk more about the, uh, the existing corridors versus building a new road. Uh, that's beginning to get to be old hat, so to speak, um, there's, there's all the, you know, whether or not we use, you know, if they go three oh one, or go four, or four forty-one, um, there's just so many problems that are presented with that, you have to, either way, you're gonna have to build another road, because you're gonna have to build limited access lanes. You know, there's no way to, to use an existing road and make it a high-capacity, high-speed roadway, because you already have high ends, you already have businesses, you already have, uh, you already go through developed areas, that you're gonna have to do something with it. So it's, it's either, uh, a remodel, or start from scratch. And then the question is, where are you the less, less likely to upset them? So. And, yeah, I just need to say, Miss Sally, there was more discussion on, on which, you know, if we do build a new road, which corridor would be the most acceptable, the one to the south, or the one that comes into the county. And it really was only a half-day meeting, it was actually, you know, pretty short. Thing that I can't wrap my mind around is public comments seem to center on the Fort Jackson bill. And there's, must be something I'm missing about what the use of this road is beyond what we've been explaining, as far as a reliever artery off of I seventy-five, and, you know, the use for evacuation route. I mean, I, it just for life, I mean, I can't imagine that they would ship goods from far east through the Panama Canal, bring them to Tampa, load them on truck, ship them to Jackson, load them back on truck, or load them back on boat, send them north. That don't make any sense to me, you've already went all the way around the world, and you're going down, just going around the tip of Florida, but for some reason, how many, Miss Sally, you, did you watch the whole thing?
I watched, I only got to see from, uh, three P M to five.
So you saw the public comment?
So I saw, I saw that, but. I have, I have concerns, because I, I know they had ruled out that first, um, dark green, whatever it was. And they were talking almost equally about going across three twenty-six at I ninety-five, three twenty-six, and taking traffic off of I, I mean, I seventy-five, I'm sorry, I'm from South Florida. The I seventy-five, and taking it across three twenty-six to take it up to either three oh one, four forty-one area, to take that traffic off and away at that point. Well, there's already that road, that three twenty-six was wide in that area, and there is a bypass that even goes away from that busy intersection. I go that route all the time to go, evolve a place. So, the big thing that I worried about, and they continued to talk about like it was nothing, is this swath of green that's going right up through forty-one, using forty-one through Williston. And what aggravated me more was they, I went out on the internet, and I found all the community meetings. And there's a community, that they wanna have the community meetings before they have the meeting at the RV Crossing, in Williston, on the twenty-fourth of June, Friday, nine A M. A lot of people are gonna be there. But, we did not get a community meeting set up for Leavy County, it's in Alachua County, and Marion County, and Downing Citrus.
Some, they're gonna get one north of Hernando, I mean, they try to centralize these meetings, to make them as convenient for Dan, as well as the public.
Well, I plan on being, at least, I, I may not make the last one on the ninth, but on the seventh and eighth, I'm gonna try and make the hotel in Alachua, in Gainesville, and the other one in Marion County, definitely. But, there'll be a lot more people that are going to try to come to the crossings, and that clubhouse isn't gonna be big enough. And there's a lot, most of the people that I'm talking to are in it. It's gonna wipe out Marston, I'm really afraid of that eminent, and the. Domain. And you should be upset about it, because it could be your property, as well as the church property.
I know, that's where it comes to me, it comes to my property, yeah.
Yes. So are you planning on selling big, or are you planning on the.
Well, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say one thing about the interstate, okay?
Right.
They say it tears up, every agriculture community that it goes through.
It does.
Okay, I've worked every county in the state, and you start from this lot of that's cold, Holmes County, agriculture community, Washington County, nothing but agriculture. Jackson County, Maryhampton, nothing but agriculture. Quincy, Gadsden County, nothing but agriculture. Skip Tallahassee. Jefferson County, nothing but agriculture. Madison, nothing but agriculture. Hamilton, nothing but agriculture. I tend to run straight through every one of them, and it's not deterred a bit of the agriculture. All it done would bring in more revenue to that county.
It's nothing to bring in.
All up down the road. Now, you want my opinion, I give to.
Right. Saying, I, I figured out with it. I really and truly hope, I talked to the mayor last night, he's for it, he thinks it's gonna be great for Williston. I see it coming right up there by the new high school, High Milk School that we just finished building, and the airport, Horsemans Park.
They'll go, they're gonna, they'll have to go, they'll have to go to the, to the east of there.
Which, going east of there.
No, excuse me, to the west of there.
West.
George Bronson.
To the west of it is all the blueberry farm, and the, the other area that we have is Edridge Paddleman. The cracker house.
And that, Miss Sally Ann, if you look at how forty-one is laid out, from, from Marion County.
I travel it all the time.
No, there's two old railroad tracks.
Yes.
That are not being used there, and, and just by listening to some of the conversation that has gone on.
I know, they wanna go parallel with that, so that they can have a combined.
Right, and, but there again, you know, it, it, in listening, that they're never saying where it is that, that the road is gonna end up at. I know it's not gonna stop at the Leavy County line somewhere.
No, it's supposed to go up, and it's gonna go south, just south of Newberry, and then go across towards Gainesville, it's not going through Newberry.
Right, it's gonna go around.
It's gonna go at that point, question.
But where's it going, but where's it going from there, Jacksonville, to Jacksonville?
Yes, well, eventually.
I ninety-five, that's, that's the, and, and everybody has their own opinion, but nobody says, no, whenever I bring this up, these meetings, no, you're absolutely wrong. The, the idea is, and, and, and I think I've said this before, I'll say it again, is you have a very large population in the Tampa Bay region, very large. And there is no good exit plan for those people, besides I seventy-five. You can't put them on nineteen, cause it's so prone to flooding, in addition to all the issues with the traffic that's there now, and then, and the congestion and all that. You can't shoot them across I four, because if a storm comes into the bay, and goes, travels in a western, or easternly path, as they're going to do, you have lots of people on I four trying to get to I ninety-five that are trapped, can't get away fast enough. Not a very good option, they want to have northern roadways to get them out, so the, the idea is to put some on I seventy-five south, put some on I seventy-five, north of Gainesville, get them to where they can get out on seventy-five, where they can get across the state to ninety-five, and go up, to me, doesn't make much sense for them on ninety-five, you're just taking them to another coast, if we're talking about this presumed storm that crosses the state, what's it gonna do, whenever you get to the Atlantic, it's gonna swing north, still gonna harass these people who are trying to get away, but it's to get them, the people out of the peninsula, all the peninsula, in the event of a category five Katrina-like, coming right up to state. That's where it really is, is, is the issue, is, is to get this massive population out. And I, I can't ever keep the category right, my geography's terrible, a sixth grade teacher would be mad at me, but we learned in emergency management, you have Pinellas County and Hillsborough County, or Hillsborough, Pinellas, how it works. You, actually, if there was a war to evacuate, the county to the south gets to evacuate before the county to the north. So if there's a storm coming, and you lived in whichever one is on more of the peninsula, they say get out, and they tell us, you gotta stay here till all those people are gone, so that you don't create a massive congestion of everybody trying to get out one by one. I mean, so there, there's a, a real issue with moving people out without reaching safely, in the event that you end up having a massive evacuation.
I was in Andrew, I actually was sleeping up here in Marston, safe as shit. And I had not put my relatives down on my condo, so I drove in the middle of the night to plantation, to Fort Lauderdale, so I'd get my, and then there was no gas to bring me back. Because they'd taken everybody from the north part of Miami, and brought them up through the state at that point, and they even had turned up the toll booth on the, on the turnpike to get them through quit quickly. However, they stopped in Broward County to get gas, and took all the gas for those people. The people in the Keys had to stay there, they weren't allowed to even leave, they were left there, and thank heavens they went through Kendall, where I worked, instead. And that, that situation happens all the time, they, they do that constantly, South Florida. That, we weren't supposed to have anything, I left Miami on Thursday evening, we thought it wasn't even gonna hit the Mahamas. And then overnight it came, and then that's what happens. But there were people, there were people in Palm Beach, there were people that came all the way up to Marion County to get away from it. And it, the traffic was terrific, and there are other problems, I mean, there are other problems that are gonna happen. I lived in Sunsetty Center in Hillsborough County too, when I was up here. There's, there is a problem in getting all those people out, but that's not, that shouldn't be our problem, that shouldn't create a problem for us.
No. You look at it as a problem, and other people look at it as an opportunity, it's a different.
I just, I'm sure I'll be dead gone, it's not even gonna, I'll have ashes, I, my ashes are going back to Fort Lauderdale.
Yeah, from Bushmore South, they're adding lanes as we speak.
Yes.
Just on I seventy-five, two weeks ago, and they're, they're adding lanes north and south on both sides, from Bushmore South. So, yes, it'll be many, long years.
People have asked me, and I, as though I knew, why they didn't widen I seventy-five, and all I know is that it's an impossible situation as it is now, but I know in Texas, they have roadways that are just parallel to their turnpikes and their, their highways.
Go feeder highways.
Yes, yes, you have to get off.
Four forty-one, they're looking at I seventy-five, I mean, they're just parallel.
Um, anyway, the, uh, the meeting held in Leavy County will be held on Friday, June twenty-fourth, at the Williston Crossing RV Resort Clubhouse, tentatively, nine A M to four thirty P M, um. There are three community outreaches that will be held in the beginning of the month of June. Tuesday night, June seventh, uh, Alachua County, from five thirty to seven thirty, at the Best Western Gateway Grand, which is the best western that is, uh, on Thirty-Ninth Avenue and I seventy-five. Wednesday, June eighth, five thirty, seven thirty, will be held in Marion County, at the County Hilton. And the Citrus County meeting will be Thursday, January ninth, five thirty to seven thirty, College of Central Florida Citrus Conference Center, I'm not sure where that's at.
That's what happened.
The internet can be the answer to those. Uh, the community outreach meetings are, are actually gonna be your better opportunity to, to ask questions, and to, uh, interact with the folks from DOT. Uh, I encourage you to come to any and all the meetings I've mentioned, but I can forewarn you, the business meeting that we have on the twenty-fourth, you won't be allowed three minutes to speak. So, and, and they do not take questions from the public, so if you're.
Well, they took those questions at the end of the other meeting. The ones that were televised, they had public comments.
Public comments, it'll take you three minutes.
Right.
Yeah, but as far as an open meeting like we have here, where you can raise your hand.
Oh, no, not during the meeting, no.
Alright, do I hear a motion to pay the bills?
Yes.
Make a motion to pay the bills, I ask for that.
Sir?
Motion in a second, I'll favorably see the thought by saying aye.
Aye.
She carries, we have no minutes, does anybody have anything else needs to come forward this morning, Dan?
Voits, cake auction, Friday, First Baptist Church.
Glad you brought that up.
Oh.
I was gonna touch on that, too, real quick, went to the county council meeting last night, um, we have one candidate that has met the criteria of the University of Florida, and they're going through the vetting process now. They will come to us, uh, probably at the June, first meeting in June, uh, for, um, for us to interview and decide yea or nay. Apparently, this, uh, gentleman has had a long and distinguished career in four H and, uh, in the extension service, so it sounds like might be a good candidate, I'm discouraged, there's only one candidate that made it through the vetting process, but.
Can we show it up, the guy from Lock Creek County?
No, sir, I think this gentleman is from Saint John's County. Um, and another note, real quick, Friday, fourteen applicants for the public safety positions, is that correct, or thirteen?
Fourteen.
Fourteen applicants for public safety, they're working through those now, so hopefully we'll have a short list of those candidates at the next meeting. Or we'll have a list of qualifications, and have a short list, so, yes, ma'am?
Chicklin High School band cake auction at five thirty Thursday, and then their spring concert after.
So, man, you can get your cake on around here, it's election year. Rotary Fishing Tournament Saturday.
One question, I got a question.
Yes.
And I got a call yesterday afternoon about the Rotary Club having a gale or bell, but we had a little accident at the house last night with glass, and somebody fell through a plate glass window, so, I didn't get the, stood all over. Did anybody get a call about Rotary Club gale or bell, when it, when it is? Or I can't tell you.
You'll know whenever they hit, the cup and stuff. Alright, no more business?
We gonna come get them.
All favor?
All same for both.